So for roll call, we have Chair Zabriski.
Here.
We'll note that Chair Hall is absent. We have Commissioner Goff.
Here.
Commissioner Riley.
Here.
And Commissioner Tarnay.
Here.
Okay. Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? We're going to start with public comment. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to speak on anything they want to bring before the commission that does not concern an item on the agenda. So if you're here to speak to the matter concerning Gray's Crossing, you can wait. If you want to speak on anything else, please go over to the podium, state your name and go ahead and say what you have to say. Is there anyone who wants to make any public comment? Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to Agenda Item 5. That's the approval of the minutes. If everyone's read the minutes, do I have any motion for approval?
I move for unanimous approval.
I'll second.
Okay. How should we do the voting?
We can do it by name. It'll just make it easier. Commissioner Tarnay?
Yes.
Chair Zabriski?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Goff?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, we're now into, we can go to Item 7.1, which will be a public hearing on Application Number 2018-128. This is the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan Amendment. And what we're going to do is start with a presentation by staff, no longer than 15 minutes, then a presentation by the applicant, which will be no longer than 15 minutes. And then we'll have an opportunity for public comment. In regard to those of you who want to make a public comment, we have sheets on the back table where we'd like you to sign your name, so we're able to record you. You're not required to do that, but it will help for us to keep track of who spoke. When you come up to speak, you'll be limited to three minutes apiece. And there will be a timer which will let you know. A little bell will go off to let you know when three minutes are up. So why don't we go ahead and start with the staff presentation?
Good evening, Commissioners. We're here to talk about the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan Amendment. And as noted on your staff report, the town is the applicant for this team. There's no actual developer that is here to, that is the project proponent. So just to begin, to see where we're trying to end up, the recommendation tonight is based, the purpose of tonight is to provide clarity and expectations for the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area, address the pending development agreement expiration, address the community facilities, districts, issues that have impeded development of the sites, and then create housing for the community. So tonight, staff is recommending that, the Planning Commission recommended council approval of addendum to the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan EIR, the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan amendments, the general plan amendments, and zoning map amendments that are all provided in your staff report. So I'll be talking about some sites within the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area. Just for reference, this doesn't show the entire Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area, but it does include quite a bit of single-family residential lots, the golf course, and it's on either side of 89 North. So we'll be talking about the cottages, which is this site over here on the west side of 89 North, parcel F, which is across the street from PJ's and the golf course clubhouse, and the undeveloped portion of Village, which is between the two roundabouts on the east side of 89 North, and then parcel D, which is adjacent to Henness Flats. So to give you some background, in February 2004, the council adopted the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan with a development agreement. And there was quite, there was a variety of uses that were proposed and approved as part of the specific plan and development agreement. It included affordable housing, 92 affordable housing units, which is the Henness Flats, 59 cottage, or 89 total cottage units, some of which are affordable, 115 attached units, 408 market rate single-family homes, and then some live-work lofts within the Village Center. And then there's also a Village Center, which is the commercial component of the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area, which includes 48,000 square feet of commercial floor area, 120 hotel rooms, a conference facility, a community cultural center, gas station, church site, and then there's also golf course, open space, and additional church across the street, which is now the Assumption Catholic Church on the west side of 89 North. The contents of the specific plan identify what the allowed uses are and density. It provides a zoning map for the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area, tentative maps, a trail map, parking requirements, lighting requirements, and then it requires a master plan program for signs and solid waste within the specific plan. The specific plan is a governing document for the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area. In addition to the specific plan, a development agreement was entered into between the town and the developer, which is a, it's a contract, where additional public benefit was provided in exchange for set development terms. So that included construction phasing, additional units and density, affordable housing requirements, trail requirements, and then requirements for public benefits, including donation of land, which includes the land that was, that's underneath the TDRPD rec center, aquatic center, land underneath the Assumption Catholic Church, and then First Amendment Hollows. Land is also provided as part of the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan project. So there are some challenges with the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan that staff is encountering today. With the, the development agreement is expiring in March, so March 20th, 2019, that's the end date, just kind of goes away. And within that, the affordable housing requirements are in there, and that's the biggest component that the town has identified is left over in the development agreement that has not yet been met. The Gray's Crossing Specific Plan was, was developed as, was intended to be developed by one master developer, East West Partners was intended to be the master developer for the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan. So there wasn't really a lot of clarity provided and built in within the specific plan to identify what would happen if the master developer went away. Additionally, there's inconsistencies between the development agreement and the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan. There's more density and intensity defined in the development agreement. And then there's also timing issues. Our general plan update is in effect, which has made it, which has identified that there are issues within many, within some components of our town that need updating. And staff believes that the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan should be put into the general plan update process, but since a moratorium's not in effect for any development within our community, we thought this would be a short-term fix so that we can ensure that projects can move forward in the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area. Additionally, the Melrose, there are Melrose challenges within the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area. The Melrose was used as a community facilities district to help fund infrastructure on the front end, front end for the developer, for the entire subdivision at the, based on, that'll be paid back by taxes from current property owners. Currently, based on the TD-PUD's comments to the town, it appears that the Melrose could be, there could be a potential that it fails. So the hope is that development of these vacant parcels within the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan would help, help the Melrose situation in the Gray's Crossing area. In November 27th, town, town council gave direction to staff to work on modernizing and clarifying the specific plan, allow for future development on these vacant sites, ensure affordable housing is required, and then explore potential increases in density if it's feasible. So that's why we're here today. Just for, just for your information, this is what the contents of the development agreement show for the affordable housing requirements. As you can see, oh, in this tiny text, 115 attached residential units were anticipated between parcel D, F, and the Village, and then a total of 74 attached units were anticipated to be affordable of some sort. And then the cottages was anticipated to have 89 units, of which 59 units were anticipated to be affordable of some sort. So today, we're requesting that Planning Commission review specific plan amendment to the density intensity of Gray's Crossing area, deferral to the development code where the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan is silent, incorporating affordable housing requirements within the specific plan, and then some additional cleanup amendments to clean up some inconsistencies and typos that have been found throughout the amendment process. Additionally, to ensure consistency with the specific plan, we're proposing map change, a zoning map amendment and a general plan amendment. So the, this is the proposed specific plan amendment, the density intensity request. So on the left-hand side of this chart shows what is originally approved through the development agreement. And then today's proposal is shown on the right. So as you can see, the significant portions of this change are within the attached residential area. It's changing, we're proposing a change from 115 to 168 multifamily attached units. And then there's some reductions in single-family and cottages up here, and then significant changes to, reductions to the amount of square footage for the Gray's Crossing, for the non-residential portions of the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area. And just for clarification, as I noted before, the attached units were anticipated between parcels D, F, and the Village. So I'm not going to go through the entire text of the specific plan amendment, but as noted before, there's 765 residential units that are proposed within the Gray's Crossing area. That's 40 more than what was anticipated in the original approval. Additionally, staff is proposing some minimum densities for each parcel, which is something new that has not been previously provided in the specific plan. The specific plan didn't have actual allocations for each parcel. It was just all-encompassing 115 attached residential units within these three particular parcels. Additionally, I'm proposing to clarify that the cottages site is parcel B. That wasn't clear in the language. And then this identifies that non-residential uses, which I went through previously. We can go back to this for discussion purposes. And then as noted before, we're proposing to amend the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan to note that where it's silent, in some standards, the development code will be the governing document. The development code is a much thicker document than the specific plan and looks at a lot more potential needs of developers, needs of the community. And so we wanted to ensure that there was a pathway if necessary. Additionally, we're proposing to incorporate an affordable housing requirement within the specific plan. So for the vacant parcels, parcel D, F, cottages, and the Village, we're proposing to ensure that the affordable housing requirements are consistent with our development code. So 15% inclusionary, and then we have workforce housing requirements for non-residential projects, like a hotel. So as identified here, if we went to the densities that were identified within the build-out numbers, there would be 18 affordable housing units in the parcel D, three affordable housing units in parcel F, and then 13 affordable housing units in cottage, in the cottages site, along with 18 workforce housing and inclusionary units in the Village. Also, by deferring to the development code or using the development code standards for this particular requirement, it also allows for developers to look at alternative equivalent proposals which may not meet the exact number of affordable housing requirements that is identified within the development code. And then we're proposing some cleanup amendments, including some typos and inconsistencies, and then some typos get provided by Commissioner Tarnay that I incorporated and fixed. So for the zoning map, we're proposing a change in the zoning of those three or those four particular parcels, the Village, parcel F, parcel D, and then the cottage site, to go back to being planned community, so that we would know to go back to the original, to the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan document, rather than relying on existing zoning that doesn't, the RM zone and the CN zone are actually zoning districts within our development code. So they don't necessarily, but the requirements and the allowances within these particular parcels in the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area do not correlate with our, do not exactly correlate with our standard zoning designation. So we thought we'd be a little more general and move it, just defer to the specific plan for requirements. And then we're proposing a change to the general plan land use element table LU5, which has the specific numbers for the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan. And we're just changing the numbers to be consistent with what is proposed in the specific plan. And then additionally, we're proposing to change the four parcels' general plan land use designation to PC2, to be more consistent with other PC designations within our community, including PC1 and PC3, and particularly for the vacant sites that have yet to be developed. Staff has prepared an addendum to the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan EIR, which looked at all the impacts that were identified within that EIR, but looked specifically at air qual, I would say that the two biggest components were that we looked at were air quality and traffic. And air quality, we did see, this is a comparison of what we found in terms of construction, air quality emissions versus operational, and then the greenhouse gas difference, which we used the CAL EE mod calculator to figure out exactly what we believed would be the change with the proposed versus the existing. So as you can see, there's a reduction in some and a increase, a slight increase in both, but it seems fairly similar. And then we also, the engineering division took a look at the traffic analysis of the change, of the proposed changes in uses, and the reallocation of square footages and residential units, and found that there was a decrease in the total percentage of total peak, PM peak hour trips. We provided, we received some public comments from homeowners within the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan area that specifically, I would say the biggest issues were opposing the density at parcel D, traffic, parking issues, particularly in conjunction with the existing parking issues at Henness Flats, property values, the decrease, the potential decrease in property values with the potential increase in density or changes to the specific plan, and then the desire for more neighborhood commercial rather than less. So today, staff is recommending that the commission adopt Resolution Number 2019-03, recommending to the council that they approve the addendum to the final environmental impact report, previously certified for the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan, approve the specific plan amendments to the Gray's Crossing Specific Plan, approve general plan amendments, and approve a zoning map amendment. Alternatives that you can consider is to modify the proposed amendments or recommend to the town council that additional environmental review should be conducted. And then this is, you're providing a recommendation to our town council, and then if whatever recommendation comes out of this discussion, this item will be heard by the town council at their March 12th, 2019 meeting. That concludes my presentation.
Okay. Since we don't have an applicant presentation, we can go directly to public comment. That will then be followed by a response by staff, five-minute response just to address public comments. And then we will go to questioning by the commission, followed by deliberation by the commission. So for those of you who would like to make a public comment, if you would line up against the far wall, identify yourself when you come to the podium, and you will have three minutes to make a comment.
And please, if you haven't filled out a speaker card, it looks like a half-sheet of paper on the table. When you first come in, go ahead and do that and drop it off to me before you leave. Thank you.
Yumi, while we're waiting, can you just pull up again the summary of the comments? I think the first one was parcel D density. Thank you. Okay, we're ready.
My name is Baron Karenite. I am a property owner in Gray's Crossing. Well, I understand that everyone is supportive of affordable housing. The challenge we all face is to identify who is going to pay for it. While it may appear that there are multiple complex land use amendments before this body tonight, the unspoken business before you is to require the Gray's Crossing community to pay for more than its fair share of affordable housing. Town council has sponsored an application and directed its staff to advance land use actions that violate state law in order to force a disproportionate affordable housing obligation on the Gray's Crossing community and position it once again for catastrophic financial failure. When the next catastrophic financial collapse occurs, it will no longer be isolated, but will burden the entire Truckee community. I submit here with correspondence to the board, it's been provided, that provides full account of the following points. One, the Gray's Crossing Master Plan in its entirety has vested rights under the 1996 general plan. No element of the Gray's Crossing Master Plan can be legally modified under state law without modification of the development agreement. Adoption of Resolution 2019-03 by this planning commission is a violation of state law. Two, the proposed amendments disproportionately and unfairly burden the Gray's Crossing community in order to satisfy the broader housing goals of the Truckee community. Three, the proposed amendments do not support resolution of the current and future community finance district delinquencies, but only create new economic risks that will extend to the entire Truckee community. Four, the proposed amendments appear to be in consultation with parties that have no legally binding ownership rights in the Gray's Crossing community. Five, the proposed amendments violate multiple state of California statutes and town of Truckee ordinances, while blatantly disregarding the legal protections under which all of the economic investments within the community have been made to date. In addition to the public record, I provided my complete correspondence of legal issues, financial implications, and inequities of this proposed action to the Gray's Crossing Homer's Association. I would encourage all members of the Homer's Association to become informed of how the proposed action impacts their interest in the Gray's Crossing community. As a property owner, a great, property owner in Gray's Crossing, I have rights under the 2004 development agreement, and I do not consent to the amendments before this body. I urge the commission to continue this public hearing, request additional information, and require additional environmental review prior to taking any action on this application. There is no urgency for this planning commission to be complicit in violations of state law. Thank you.
I appreciate your community enthusiasm. You know, I think we have a lot of people who want to make comments, and so can you hold your applause until after the meeting? Okay, thank you. And your name, sir?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Morgan Hargrave. I'm a resident of adjacent neighborhood, Prosser Lakeview Estates. I've been following this project for the 11 years I've lived in the neighborhood, and I seek some clarification on some of the inconsistencies that are in some of the, in the original plan. Namely, what I'm seeing is, the original 2004 plan indicates that the, what's known as the lodge is set aside for designated use to allow commercial condominiums or fractional ownership. Since then, the plans submitted in 2017 show a hotel in that spot, and the current plans, the 2018 plans, show, also show a hotel. The town's February 19th letter has some inconsistencies in it. The lodge is referred to as hotel at some, in some instances. And then in another description, the lodge is again referred to as commercial condominiums, timeshares, or fractional ownership. I think this should be clarified. I think the use of that site as a hotel versus condominiums are different uses and may have different impacts on the local community, look, and the environment. And I entered, I encourage the commissioners to think about that and perhaps look at a further environmental review if that has not been done already under the, if the, if it's going to be a hotel, let's make sure that we've done the proper review on that versus, you know, another use.
Thank you, Mr. Hargrave.
Excuse me. Hi. My name's Erica Stein. I'm here tonight as the president of the Gray's Crossing Homeowners Association. The Gray's Crossing HOA represents over 300 property owners in the Gray's Crossing community. An amendment to the specific plan has great implications to our neighborhood, property values, and the enjoyability of our homes. We have only recently become aware of this action and feel that we were not properly notified of this proposal as would have been appropriate. Nevertheless, this is a significant concern and one where our input is essential. I am joined tonight by a number of concerned Gray's Crossing, Gray's Crossing property owners, excuse me. As an HOA, our specific concern with this amendment is related to the density proposed on parcel D. The original plan allowed for 115 multifamily units to be spread across three parcels, the parcel adjacent to PJ's, the Village, and parcel D. The new plan increases that total allowance by 53 units to 168 units, and eliminates the requirement that any of those units be placed on the PJ's parcel, and instead concentrates all 168 on parcel D and the Village. From the Village plan, we know that 48 of those units are proposed for the Village, leaving 120 units to be built on parcel D. That is five units more than the previous total number of units that would have been spread across all parcels. The Gray's Crossing neighbors adjacent to this parcel purchased their property when the rule was different. An increase such as this is unacceptable. For the planning commission to evaluate how the proposed density will impact our neighborhood, you need only to look at the adjacent Henness Flat Apartments. This development has 92 units placed on a parcel of similar size to parcel D, approximately six acres. These 92 units are comprised of two- and three-bedroom apartments. This complex does not have adequate parking. On an average day, 20 to 30 overflow vehicles are parked on the now vacant parcel D. In addition, 15 to 20 vehicles are parked along the split rail fence at the entrance to Gray's Crossing. Both of these parking issues have been brought up to the town with no corrective action being taken. There is simply no place for the overflow vehicles to go. It can be expected that apartments in the town of Truckee often have one or two residents per room. This occupancy will require at a minimum two and a maximum eight parking spots per unit. I would anticipate that the builders don't intend to incorporate the number of parking I would anticipate that the builders don't intend to incorporate the number of parking spots that would be suitable for a development of this size. In turn, parking issues on Henness will only get worse, and the impacts to Grace Crossing will only become more intolerable. Furthermore, the applicant is proposing that the 120 units consist of 44-bedroom apartments and 80 studios. As we've seen with other Truckee multifamily housing developments, it is reasonable to project occupancy at four to eight people per four-bedroom apartment and two people per studio. Therefore, there could be over 400 individuals living on a six-acre parcel of land. This is not in the best interest of parcel D tenants, our community property owners, or the desirability of our neighborhood Grace Crossing. It should also be noted that an eight-pump gas station, I'm almost done, and a general store is proposed for the very same intersection. I urge the planning commission to consider how all of these uses will impact an already congested corner.
Thank you.
We are concerned. This is an example of irresponsible development that puts the burden of financial profit for this developer on the shoulders of our community.
Thank you, Erica.
Our HOA is prepared to pursue legal representation should this amendment move forward. Thanks.
Good evening, commission members. I live at 11590 Henness Road. I'm a full-time resident on Henness. I served on the Grace Crossing HOA board for four years. I actually deeply regret that I'm having to present in this way tonight on these things. I would have thought we'd have some open town hall-type meetings. I know there have been developers in back-dooring with the planning folks, and there's been no community outreach, and this is the first time we've heard of any of this. So, I, that's just a bad way to start. For over two years, while I was on the HOA, I've had contact with Yumi on our concerns about the parking issues at the Henness Flats and how all the cars don't fit. They spill into the street and onto parcel D, as you heard from Erica. The problem is worse in the summer, when the trades are in full swing, and many of the folks living at Henness Flats are in the construction trades. Either the parking needs need to be added, or we need to enforce whatever regulations were put on the landlord, but right now, nothing is happening. Oh, the other issue is snow. Right now, the bulk of the snow that's removed from Henness Flats is actually on a parcel across the street that's a part of the Village. So, again, 92 units do not fit on the six-acre Henness Flat. The only reason it's somewhat tolerable right now is because the Village hasn't been built, and so therefore, the snow removal from the Henness Flats gets put on land that's supposed to be developed as a part of the Village, as well as the fact that you've got cars that right now can overflow into parcel D. So, when you have parcel D, even at the same density as Henness Flats, it wouldn't all fit. And now, to go even denser on parcel D, I mean, it's pretty simple. I'm just, where is the study that looks at the real world of what we have Henness Flats? So, any parking assumptions that's being used needs to use, we need to have staff go out, count how many cars are there in the summertime. I see my friend Becky is here. Now, when the town required us to fix a culvert on Gerard, they look at max flow. They don't go, "Well, what's the flow in the middle of the fall?" They say, "The culvert needs to handle max flow." Well, that same principle needs to be applied to a development, okay? We need to look at max parking, not what we maybe would like it to be. So, the town engineering department doesn't use what they might like it to be when it comes to water flow. The same applies here. And as Erica also mentioned, we also have a gas station that's going in eight, oh, 12 pumps or something, so it's a bigger gas station right on the same corner. So, why would we put a gas station? We've got a bus stop, the school bus stops in Henness Road, so I would like to see the traffic study and really look at 8:00 AM under the case where we've got parcel D, Henness Flats, a gas station, and the buses parked there picking up school kids. I mean, this thing needs a lot more study. So, please, send this back to staff, request them to do town hall meetings so that we don't have to be here in front of you folks. Listen to the comments that you're getting, and make sure that these issues are addressed. You know, my only analogy is, you know, I almost feel like it's in the news. Don't let this be like Trump and his wall. You know, "By God, we're going to build something. We said we're going to build affordable housing. We don't want to listen to what the people say. We are just going to build something." This is Truckee, not Washington, DC. So, I ask that you listen to the folks. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herrick.
Hi, my name is Sonia Wong, and I'm also a resident of Grace Crossing. And not to beat a dead horse, but I'm just going to say that I reiterate the sentiments of all the speakers ahead of me. And one of the things I wanted to address was the loss of community space. So, I lived in two different master plan developments prior to Grace Crossing, and one of them was promised in the Sacramento Valley. We had a community space promised to us, and it never materialized. Meanwhile, the next-door community, that was also part of our larger master community, had this community space, and I watched them all become very neighborly, watched them all gather together. They all gathered at the ranch, all gathered at the ranch house, had amazing pool parties, had amazing things happen. Car pools were never a problem, kids never got left behind, everybody had everything. We are, because of this new development, because of the many impacts, one of them is this community space being taken away. So, as Grace Crossing neighbors, we'll never have that, and we'll never be able to develop as a community that way. We are also a, when you look at environmental impact, environment is more than air, water. It's the environment that we create for our families, it's the environment that we create here, and it can be, you know, enhanced with these larger community spaces. It's going to be, when you put in the, you know, we're not going to all gather at the gas station to, you know, get the car pool together. We're not going to gather at the grocery store. I mean, we see each other in the grocery store, we're all in a hurry to get here, to get there, we say hi, we say bye, we chat in the checkout line, of course, never for more than five minutes because we're all in a hurry, but with the loss, like I said, of this community space, we're going to kind of abandon the principles that we gathered together in the beginning. And again, I reiterate everything everyone else said. The high density is going to be a problem, trying to get in and out of the community is going to be a problem. If I have to leave 30, if I have to get my daughter to get up and leave for school 30 minutes before, just so she can avoid the roundabout bus traffic, and I don't know if you've ever been in that area in the morning when the buses are actually trying to get through the roundabout, it's difficult because the roundabout was not initially constructed for a bus to navigate easily. There is a lot of traffic also coming down from Sierra Ville as more of those people are getting jobs in Reno and in Truckee. It's just, it's a, it's going to be a major impact and a large impact to our peaceful environment and our sense of community. And again, I reiterate everything that the speakers ahead of me said. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong.
Hi, everyone. I'm a little nervous, so bear with me. My name's Courtney Mathis, and I'm a full-time resident in Grace Crossing as well. I'm here to voice my strong opposition to the specific plan amendments and to the addendum to the EIR. Other residents have spoken about parking, traffic, and other issues that, which will only worsen by adding another 120 multifamily attached units side by side with the existing 92-unit complex. I unequivocally second all of those concerns. But I'd like to speak to the specifics of these amendments. I, for one, found the materials unclear at best, including the presentation today. Therefore, I would like to summarize on the record the precise impact of these amendments. In order to properly visualize the impact, I actually had to prepare my own table, laying out the number of single-family homes, affordable housing units, cottages, multifamily attached homes, and live-work lofts, as set forth in each of the original plan, the development agreement, and today's proposed amendments. I obviously can't share that with you, but I do have it here. By far, the biggest change is the number of multifamily attached units, from 48 in the original 2004 plan to 115 in the development agreement, an increase of 140% to 168 in today's amendments, an increase of 250% just in the number of units. Why is this important? Well, a lot of reasons, but for my own comments, the original EIR was based upon the original 2004 plan, so in other words, 48 multifamily units, 57 cottages, and zero live-work lofts. It was not based on the subsequent development agreement, and it was not based on the amendments today, which call for 168 multifamily units, 87 cottages, and 21 live-work lofts. So, to be clear, the commission is being asked to approve material amendments to the specific plan based on an EIR that was prepared prior to this proposed increase of 250% in multifamily attached units, 53% in cottages, and the 21 live-work lofts, as well as a much higher percentage increase in the actual residents that will reside in these units. Moreover, excuse me, both the 2004 specific plan and the development agreement were prepared under the assumption that the multifamily attached housing would be interspersed in parcels DF and the Village. The amendments under consideration today would locate the entirety of the 250% increase in multifamily attached units and parcel D, a parcel smaller and much less desirable due to, among other things, density, particularly once the new village is built out, congestion, location, et cetera, than parcel F, and would limit development on parcel F to merely 20 single-family homes. This is not a case of NIMBY. This is a case of not having the right densities for the right parcels. In Ms. Don's staff report, she mentions developer interest and discussions with developers at least half a dozen times, yet makes no mention of any community outreach or actual community interest. I would conclude by reiterating my opposition to the proposed amendments and the addendum, and ask that the commission staff instead engage in community outreach, and community meaning not just Grace Crossing, but all the surrounding communities and Henness Flats as well, and undertake a new EIR prior to proposing any material amendments to the specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Cardi.
Good evening. I'm Allison Hennig, a Grace resident. My issue is the road in front of parcel D and Henness Flats has a huge parking issue that no one is addressing, and I feel strongly that it would be wrong to consider adding any more units without addressing this current problem. The Henness Flat apartment tenants seem to have invited every uncle, cousin, and brother to move in to take advantage of the affordable rent, and they bring along multiple vehicles, including commercial trucks and vans with ladders on top. There is insufficient parking, so they park along both sides of Henness Road, sometimes nose-in, sometimes parallel or at an angle, and even in the drainage ditch, so it's completely haphazard and unsafe. We have a serious problem here, and no one is taking ownership. The apartment management told us that they do not enforce leases regarding the number of occupants, saying it would be an invasion of privacy, and that street parking is a police issue. The police say they can only enforce parking during the winter ban, and they have no other say over the strip of land that is private property. That private owner, the golf course, did put up some no-parking signs, which are disregarded, but they otherwise feel this is an apartment issue. So, we have a three-way finger pointing with nothing being done to relieve a terrible situation. Are you going to wait until a pedestrian is injured or a child is killed before figuring out how to fix this? I can't tell you how many close calls I personally have had exiting my own neighborhood in the morning as these randomly parked cars, trucks, and vans jump out into the street unexpectedly from all different angles of disorganized parking, right at a very busy intersection at the town bus stop, and also where the school buses stop for up to three to five minutes, waiting for children to board, and it's where children play and ride bikes. And this is right where the town has already approved on a congested choke point to also become the entry and exit for a 10-pump gas station. The proposal to increase density on parcel D is, in effect, a request to more than double an existing problem that has no solution in sight. A more reasonable use of parcel D, in my opinion, would be paving it to provide safe and adequate off-street parking for the unauthorized tenant overflow at Henness Flats. It would also be the perfect place for a school bus loading zone and turnaround to keep the children out of the crowded intersection that will get even more traffic once the future gas station and hotel are built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Wong. I'm a resident at Grace Crossing, and I've been living there since 2014, and I have two main issues with the new development. One is that not enough Grace residents are represented, and none of us really know about it. I've had contacts with local builders who've been building there since 2007 through the downturn, and since 2007 to the last 11 years, he's never heard of any development that's going to go up at Grace or being even proposed. So, that's one huge issue. We don't have representation. I mean, there's like maybe eight people here, I counted, that live at Grace at this meeting right now. Raise of hands, but I see maybe 12. There are over hundreds of homes there now. In 2004 and 2007, when this thing was approved, 2004, it was peak of the, peak of the real estate boom, everybody was like, "Hey, let's build whatever the hell we can, then we can sell it," right, "for a profit." 2007, during the downturn, Grace Crossing went under. We should do a full rewind, start from the beginning, and say, "Hey, this is what we're planning and putting up here," because now you have houses, now you have residents, people actually care. I talked to about 18 of my neighbors within the last few days, and no one's even heard of this before. No one knew there was a 120-room hotel coming up, 12-pump gas station, 168 multifamily homes. So, the second problem I have is, with multifamily homes, degrades property values near us. And everybody wants to like not talk about it, they just want to talk about the parking issues, but where the rubber meets the road is where the money is. So, if the multifamily homes are so, so desirable, let's put them next to the planning commission's That's all I really have. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Liza Killen. I'm a resident at Grace Crossing. The reason that I came up is, a bunch of neighbors have asked me to talk about parcel B, which is on the side of where the Bluffs neighborhood is, and it just hasn't been brought up yet. And the, I guess, the concern that those folks have over there, there's about 100 home sites over there and maybe 20 homes, and the concern is with 89 or 87, I can't remember the number, that came out in the cottages, the access to China Camp Road there would be a major congestion to getting out of the neighborhood. So, I was just wondering if the planning committee has looked at those homes having another entry or exit onto Alder or Highway 89 is to reduce that impact. And again, this is for the cottage site, which is parcel B. And then, just a quick story, I'm also in real estate, and I recently had an owner sell his home because it was near the cottage site and was seeing people walking and surveying that site and was nervous about property values, and quickly put his home on the market and sold his home. So, I think from a property value standpoint on that side of 89, there might be some concerns with homeowners and the values of their properties to see parcel B being developed, and again, the congestion and the traffic issues that might ensue if that, sort of those 89 homes, if you will, were to have, I guess, exit and entry onto, directly onto China Camp Road, which is a small residential street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Gus Jones. I'm a recent buyer in the Grace Crossing development in the China Camp area. It certainly came as a surprise to my wife and I to see this planned amendment submitted with very little public comment that was available to anybody in that Grace Crossing development. It might have influenced our buying decision had we had some awareness of what was going on. That having been said, the affordable housing element is something that is incumbent upon us as a community to address. We have to have that for us to be sustainable as a community. However, this plan would seem to maybe not be addressing it in the right way when the description of the density in the Henness Flats area is brought to mind, and we're only going to increase that. That would seem to be a negative overall. There does seem to, however, be an issue that the planning commission needs to address that the developer, and we realize that the developer there may well be financially incapable, is defaulting on a responsibility to build a community amenity that makes the Grace Crossing community better, something that they had a clear commitment to do, and I would propose that the planning commission should hold their feet to the fire and not to abandon a community center, but in fact, to complete that as part of their responsibility. Furthermore, here we are forgiving them the opportunity to build something that they had committed to doing as part of their original plan to do the development, and then additionally giving them increased density. I would think that the general community would in fact hold someone irresponsible for adopting this amendment. Thanks.
Good evening, planning commission members. Alexis Aller, Executive Director of Mountain Area Preservation. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the specific plan amendments for Grace Crossing. While we understand the development agreement is about to expire, we feel as these amendments are being rushed through the planning process and need to be handled in a more thoughtful process within the 2040 general plan update. The remaining parcels at Grace Crossings are opportunity sites for future development and can help to address our locals' housing crisis. The Grace Crossing specific plan was created through multiple hearings as well as workshops in order to create housing, development, and community benefits back in 2004. As many of you know, much has changed since 2004 with Grace Crossing. The original developer is no longer with us, they went bankrupt, the majority of development has been focused on single-family residential golf course development and the 92 units at Henness Flats. With the general plan update process, this is the appropriate time to take into consideration changes to the specific plan and how best to address housing with the remaining parcels. Good planning takes time, and we are concerned that these changes are being driven by developer interest rather than civic engagement, helping to craft feasible density and affordable housing requirements to fit the environment. We'd like to suggest that the planning commission continue the hearing and that the town of Truckee host a Grace Crossing specific plan amendment workshop so that current homeowners, community members, interested developers, and housing groups can be involved to help re-envision the density and the affordable housing requirements for the specific plan. Additionally, we would like to have more time to review the EIR addendum to better understand how the additional traffic and air quality impacts were analyzed. With that, I thank you for listening to my comments, and I hope that you'll continue this important matter to allow for more time to consider the amendments for the specific plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexis.
Good evening. My name is Brian Helm with Paradigm Eight Partners. We're the owners of the Tahoe Mountain Club as of January, and we were also one of the developers who expressed interest in parcel D and parcel F. And I had some different comments written down, but I figured I'd change those and just kind of share a little perspective as to kind of why I'm standing here and how we kind of first started to express our interest. Our interest actually in parcel D and F started before we purchased the Tahoe Mountain Club to keep it out of bankruptcy. We were involved in the Tahoe Mountain, the Mountain Housing Council, excuse me, on their advisory group. And through that work, Hayes, my partner Hayes and I have worked in the Tahoe-Tuckee region for going on 13 years now, and we wanted to get involved in the affordable housing conversation and be part of that solution. And so, again, whether the proposal that's there today is right or not, the original intention was through that Mountain Housing Council discussion to kind of look for different parcels that were originally zoned and planned for multi-housing, were candidates for providing that type of housing, and then to bring forth ideas to do that. And so, when we looked at parcel D, we actually originally looked at parcel B, D, and F, all of which were defaulted Melrose parcels from the original developer, they were just interesting parcels from the perspective that they kind of had a lower land cost, they had zoning, and they had use, and they had neighboring uses that were consistent with that housing component. And so, what we did at that point was brought forth just a pre-development application, just to kind of ask questions, because these were new items. So, this wasn't meant to be a process that kind of circumvented the discussion, circumvented a public process. It was really the pre-development process by which you kind of look at the zoning underlying, understand a parcel, you'd say, here's the solution, or here's the problem we're trying to solve, here's some of our thoughts and ideas, and then staff provided comment back on those. That kind of morphed into this process because of the expiration of the DA, but again, wasn't meant to be a process whereby caused consternation or caused stress. It was just grew out of that Mountain Housing Council and then kind of is kind of where we are today. And so, the scale that was, when this was presented to town council, it was an interesting discussion because they were actually pushing for more density than we had put forth in our original discussions in the pre-development application. So, it was kind of a different conversation, and the scale that was proposed wasn't about, you know, a lot of times with second home or market rate, it's about maximizing profit. Oops, sorry, two seconds. It was just about, it was about providing the scale to be able to achieve the lower rents, the more cost-affordable rents for local and workforce housing, and so that's where the scale came about. But again, happy to answer other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dale Creighton, and I'm the representative for the village, and while we're not opposed to the proposed amendment taking place here, we're concerned that we're being lumped into a process that we had no intention to be involved with. We have had an application on file now for over a year and a half. We've been through the pre-application review process. We have an accepted application for development of the project, which we believe is consistent with the original parameters of the Grace Crossing specific plan. While we are not proposing any changes to that specific plan, nor are we relying on the provisions of the development agreement, we have agreed to provide for additional affordable housing that the staff has asked for. So, our concern is being put into this general plan amendment when we have an application complete, on file, and we'd like to be allowed to be due process in accordance with the provisions we're on file. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars doing architectural review, various economic studies, various amendments per staff request, and we'd like to have our project to be evaluated on its merits. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Anyone else want to speak who hasn't spoken already? Thank you. What I'd like to do now is give staff an opportunity to respond to the extent they deem appropriate. Given the number of public comments, you could take more than five minutes.
Thank you for that. I'll go first. My name's Andy Morris, I'm the town attorney. There are just a couple of comments from Mr. Karenite and Attorney Mathis that I need to address. The first is that Mr. Karenite has said that we can't amend the specific plan without amending the development agreement. The development agreement's going to expire of its own accord without town action in a month, on March 19th. So, nothing that the council could do would take effect prior to the expiration of the development agreement. If the planning commission were moved to recommend approval of the specific plan amendment, and the council would consider it before the 19th, but it would be timed so as not to take effect until after. So, the development agreement is a moot point at this point. And also, Mr. Karenite and Ms. Mathis raised the issue about the EIR. One thing I think is important to bear in mind is that the baseline is not actually what was in the last EIR, the specific plan EIR. Due to a mix-up that long predates, I think, most of us here, somehow the development agreement approved a larger number of units than was contemplated in the EIR. I don't know how that happened. It's not supposed to, but that means that the development agreement with its higher unit counts is actually the current baseline. So, that's what you look at when determining the delta between current conditions, which is the development agreement entitlements, and what would be allowed under this. So, you can decide amongst yourselves whether the EIR addendum is the right approach, but the baseline really is that higher number rather than the lower number that was in the previous EIR.
We don't have anything further.
Okay, now, what we'll do is turn to commission questions, and when we get into deliberation, I think we might want to divide it up, thinking ahead, try to track possibly, categorize the comments. I think we need, we're going to want to address the housing intensity, affordable housing, parcel D in particular, and the parking connected, parking in traffic connected with parcel D, and then the commercial, reduction in commercial, and then the reduction in community services. And depending on what the rest of you want to do, we can modify that, but this is to help direct the questioning. Does anyone want to start the questioning? I can, I have a number of questions. Okay, thank you. It's my understanding, Yumi, that what we're talking about is an increase of, is it about 53 units over what we have now totally?
It's 40 additional units.
I'm sorry, 40. It's 53 in terms of the multiple family?
That's correct.
Okay. On the cottages, that's actually, we're going to have a reduction. We're going from 89 to 87?
That's correct.
Are these numbers on the units for what's being proposed, these are maximum densities, correct?
Yes, and there is discussion within the residential build-out numbers about minimum-maximum, and that could be something that planning commission discusses if that's appropriate or not.
Okay. But that's to say, as particular projects come up for approval, the actual number of units would then be revisited, is that correct?
It could be. If there is some flexibility that's requested by the developer in terms of going down from the maximum that's allowed, then that would be at the discretion of the planning commission if they find that there are other standards that need to be met in order to accommodate.
Okay. And then, parking impacts would also be part of that discussion?
That's correct.
On a particular project? Can you clear up the comment that Morgan Hargrave brought up about whether this is a hotel or a condominium or a lodge, and what the change is from the 2004?
So, within the Grace Crossing specific plan, the current one, there is a tentative map, there was a tentative map that proposed a 120-room lodge, which says that it's a commercial condominium times your fractional ownership. So, that's described. Within the land use, the allowed land uses in the village center, hotels, motels are also allowed. So, it is an allowed use within the Grace Crossing specific plan.
Okay, so what I see is the change between the 2004 approval and the one being proposed is an increase of nine units in the lodge?
That's correct, and I would say that Commissioner Tarnay in our previous meeting earlier today, she did note that we should clarify that hotels should be included in that list in the non-residential uses section of the proposed Grace Crossing specific plan.
Okay. Erica Stein, the president of the Grace Crossing, mentioned she understood that under the 2004 plan, there would be 115 units of multifamily dwellings spread across three parcels. Is that correct?
They were allowed to be across the village center, parcel B and parcel F. It doesn't say exactly how many or if any can be left vacant or not, so technically, if something came in where parcel F or parcel D currently is, if they said 100, if no other residential units have been built in that community, if 115 were proposed there, it would be consistent with the specific plan. It would just mean that parcel F would have to remain vacant.
Now, I noticed that it appears that the multifamily are being, multifamily units are being concentrated down in the southeast corner of Grace Crossing, right behind the Henness Flats apartments. And it also appears from the map that this is on the edge of the rest of the Grace Crossing development. Most of the large single-family units are not close to parcel D. Is that correct? Or how close is the closest single-family home? Let me put it that way.
Directly to the east, there are single-family homes. Let me... So, the closest, you can see residential parcels over here, directly in front, and to the east.
Is, can you tell me why the multifamily dwellings are, do appear to be concentrated in parcel D instead of in the, being spread across into the village side or parcel F?
I think it's based off of some discussion with developers to find out what would be the most effective way to construct these residential units. I think that the planning commission can discuss whether or not these should be looked at in all of the sites in the village and parcel F and parcel D, and if there's specific allocations that should be presented in each of those.
Erica was the only one I heard who seemed to indicate that it would be better to spread multifamily dwellings farther into Grace Crossing. What I would like to know, though, is from your understanding from the developers, are they saying that it would be less expensive to concentrate multifamily dwellings in parcel D?
Chair Zabriskie, you do have the two prospective developers in the audience, if you want to bring them up to the podium to answer your questions.
If they're willing. You're on.
Hayes Parzibok with Paradigm Eight Partners. As it relates to the density question, I think our initial read of feedback from staff as well as some of the folks within the community that we spoke with, it seemed as though parcel F was closer to PJ's, was preferable to the Grace Crossing community to be a lower density, similar to the single-family lots that exist out there, excuse me, today, and also looking at like-for-like, you know, concentration of density, parcel D was sort of the logical place to place additional multifamily adjacent to the existing multifamily.
Why is it that you felt parcel F would not be as appropriate for multifamily?
Because it was closer to the heart of the Grace Crossing community within the heart of the single-family lots.
I don't need comments from the audience, thank you. We've had public comment. I'm just directing my questions to Hayes. Was it your understanding, then, that homeowners in Grace Crossing preferred to have any multifamily housing, if there was to be multifamily housing? housing, if there was to be multifamily housing on the perimeter of the development, rather than mixed in with the single-family homes?
That was our impression, yes. And also, instead of trying to have, trying to co-mingle uses within a specific parcel, to try and consolidate the uses such as having single-family within parcel F and then multifamily within parcel D, if that makes sense, versus, versus mixing the two, trying to mix the two in one parcel.
Did you try to do any financial comparison indicating whether multifamily homes would cost less to potential buyers or renters versus spreading them out through other parts of the Grace Crossing?
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah. Did you do any kind of financial analysis indicating that the least expensive multifamily construction would be, could be done in parcel D?
Yeah, I think when you're looking at the, at the site, one of the, I'm drilling down in the weeds a little bit, but in parcel F, there's a significant strip of open space along the, the main frontage there, not Henness, but Prosser Dam, excuse me. And so, when looking at the layout of, you know, land planning each one of the sites, we thought that parcel F also lent itself to a lower-density product because it looks to be a longer linear layout versus parcel D, we thought lent itself more to a multifamily layout.
Okay. Hayes, are you the project leader for both parcel D and parcel F?
Yeah, Paradigm Eight is owned by myself and Brian Helm, who was up here earlier, and we, we tag-team most of these projects together, so.
Okay, and you're doing both parcel D and parcel F?
Correct.
What about the cottages?
That is, that's a separate development partner.
Okay, thank you. Hayes, are you involved at all in making recommendations about the size of the community center or the commercial development?
We have zero involvement with the Village project.
Okay, thank you. Those are all the questions. While Hayes is up here, does anyone else have questions for Hayes?
I do, yeah. Hey, Hayes, are you the current owner of parcel F and parcel D?
No, sir.
Okay. So you guys are, you're just speculating at this point?
That's correct. We have option agreements. Given the lack of certainty around entitlement, along with the Melrose debt, it's, it's quite frankly, not feasible to take ownership of the, of the projects at this time without, given the level of certain, uncertainty with entitlement and the financial responsibility. So I think we do have a binding purchase and sale agreement on both parcels. And so, we would look to exercise those options in the, in the event that we're able to gain greater entitlement certainty.
Do you have a number in mind where is a break-even, or you get to profitability on parcel D, like as far as how many units, what actual density you can make money off of?
I would say that it's, that's a very difficult answer, or question to answer because of, you know, as you probably have heard, construction pricing is fluctuating significantly, and we have not been able to go through yet, the, you know, design, even design development or schematic development, design process, to be able to get to a place where you could get a conceptual price. We haven't gone through the engineering department to look at, you know, how much parking would be required. And so, it's a, that's a difficult question to answer at this time. I can tell you that, that with most of the other projects that we're involved with, part of the desire for density, in addition to getting pushed to, to put as much density as we could on that parcel by Town Council, you know, I think that there's always going to be a fixed cost component to any project. And so, to the extent you're, you're able to create more saleable or rentable space as part of that project, you're in a better position to be able to create a project that is both feasible and able to offer affordable rents, which is, which is our goal here.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to come back up if anybody has, has more questions.
Let me see if anyone else has questions up here right now. You, Suzie, or Nikki? Go ahead, Suzie.
Not of Hayes.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Hayes.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I do. So, you were looking at doing parcel D and parcel F together at the same time. Would there be a staging sort of requirement? So, so we all know that there are affordable housing requirements that weren't met in the previous project, and then they went bankrupt. And, so, I mean, it looks like F would be the profitable part, and then D would be the less profitable part. Would D, how would we know that D would get built? And...
Very fair question. It's one that, that Yumi has, has challenged us on as well. And it is our, quite frankly, D is our priority. You know, while, while you're, you're right on the surface, you know, a single-family project is easier to sort of get your arms around and, and understand the financials. There's still a significant number of lot inventory out there in the community, and so, you know, this, both of these projects, quite frankly, are, are more passion projects for Brian and I wanting to do, you know, the right projects for the community than, than, you know, as some have, have, you know, claimed trying to, you know, line our pockets. I think, you know, if we were looking to do that, we would be working on other projects, I promise you that. These are, these are projects, we've done market-rate second-home projects as part of our careers, and, and this is, you know, Shawna Doherty with the Housing Council's a close friend of Brian's and mine both, and, and she's been pushing us over the years to, to look at this, and, and I think this was an opportunity that we saw to step up and, and try to bring, take our expertise and bring them to bear to try to solve not only the, the community need for housing, but also to try to help solve the Grace Crossing Melrose issue. So, does that, I guess, you know, as it relates to, to which goes first, I think our plan at this point would be to bring them in as a combined project. And, you know, we, we remain committed to, to being a housing-forward project. Does that, does that answer your question?
It does. It's still sort of general, not specific, promising. We will build that one first, or anything, just from a, trying to provide affordable housing point of view. But, you know, that's, that's, that's still an answer. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna delve into a deeper, oh, do, do you want to go ahead? Here.
I do have a que, I have, it's gonna, it's tag teams with your question, and it just came to me. So part of the original development agreement, I was part of the Planning Commission for the go-around 15 years ago, and they implemented a phasing plan, and, and so some of that got enacted, some of that did not, specifically the cottages. Would you be open to agreeing to a phasing agreement, or some, this is gonna tie into what Suzie was talking about, or having the assurance that you're not going to just do the cash cow, single-family lots, and, you know, not do the multifamily? But would you consider a type of a phasing agreement, or?
Yeah, and I think, I think, I think it's important to note that I'm not, I'm not being general about it to try to skirt the question. I'm being general about it, and I mentioned this to Yumi earlier today, is that those projects very well, while they may be brought in together, they may be capitalized differently. And so, whenever you're capitalizing a project differently with different ownership groups and different investors, it's always difficult to sort of, quite frankly, hamstring one project with another. And so, one idea that I threw out there to Yumi today as a potential option would be, you know, with the proposed amendment, parcel F would have an inclusionary requirement. And so, one, one idea that is sort of maybe similar to Nikki's comment would be to require that that three-unit housing be, be built or, or brought to bear prior to being able to get an improvement plan set, let's say, for, for parcel F. Again, it is our, it is our plan and goal to, to focus on parcel D first because of, because of the housing need. But again, understand the town's sensitivity around somebody coming in and doing parcel F and not doing parcel D. So yes, open to different options that would, that would deal with that concern.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is the time to delve into this deeper subject of inclusionary housing. Anybody have any objections?
Only one way to find out.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in. Okay.
You want me to stay up here? I'm happy to.
I would like your opinion on this, yeah, for sure.
I'm always good at giving my opinion.
Super. So if we look at the original development agreement, they had, there's 115 attached residentials with 74 affordable housing units. They had 89 cottages with 59 affordable units. Are those numbers familiar to you? Does that sound?
Yeah, don't have them in front of me, but, but yes.
Okay, so if you, if you look at the original development agreement for these specific parcels, you're looking at a rate of 60% of affordable housing, more than 60%, which obviously is excessive. So, I, no one's suggesting that we, we hang anybody with that 60% requirement for an affordable housing. But then I did, I went ahead and looked at the numbers of the entire development, the 725 residential units with 225 affordable units. And so if you look at that proportion, that comes out to 30% affordable units. So in the staff report, Yumi wrote, "The presence of the development agreement and its requirements indicate that affordable housing beyond the Henness Flats apartment complex was desired and anticipated in the specific plan area." And to me, it looks like it was desired and anticipated to a degree of 30%, which is obviously more than our current inclusionary housing ordinance of 15. So my question to you is, as a, as a compromise between that 60% that was required in the development agreement and the 15% in our current town inclusionary housing ordinance, could we aim higher for affordability? Could we aim at a 20% or a 30%?
You surely could. I would say it's our goal to put forth a plan for parcel D that is, that is either or both alternative equivalent and affordable for all units on that parcel. And then parcel F is proposed as market. So I would say, you know, as a developer, I would be, I guess, same, made this comment to Yumi as well, I'm always cautious about sort of, you know, encouraging you guys to sort of push that type of regulation, I guess, beyond what might be required otherwise within the town. But I can tell you that our plan is to, to be, you know, what I would consider a rather housing-heavy and affordable-heavy project package, including both parcels D and parcel F.
And one addition to that is also, it was referred to actually by our first commenter, yeah, Baron Karenite? It's actually in the specific plan currently in PC2 Policy 8, "Affordable housing shall be provided in addition to market-rate housing. The number of affordable units shall be equal to 20% of the number of market-rate units." So to me, the going down to the, the town inclusionary, 15% is actually a step down from what I see as already being included in the specific plan.
I'm gonna defer that one to Yumi.
Yeah, that's, yeah, sorry, thank you.
That's all right.
Not specifically you. I think one of the other guys behind you might want to address the same issue.
Hello there, my name is Vince Zosinkowski, I'm with Acme Development. I'm a resident of Tahoe City. Been living here for 15 years, raising my kids here, and I'm the developer that, looking at the cottages piece. I wanted to bring this up specifically with regard to your comment of pushing the inclusionary. We're stepping into kind of a problem that we didn't make, and we're trying to find a good solution that is beneficial to the community. I serve on the Mountain Housing Council as well, and I've got a lot of friends who own businesses up here and can't staff them, right? So, we all agree, we need the housing. With regard to pushing, we're, we're looking at some sort of alternative that's talking about local people so that the cottages get sold to local people, because one of the challenges we have up here is building cost. I think everybody probably knows that, right? And so, if you tell me that I have to double the number of units that get sold essentially at a loss, you're compromising my ability to do the project altogether. You know, if I'm gonna, if I'm gonna sell those to locals and try to sell those at a cost that actually locals can afford, I am, I'm actually ramping down, well, I'm talking about doing some sort of fixed margin so that people don't look at me and say, "Oh, the greedy developer is doing this." We're actually just trying to make houses. And to be honest with you, these are still going to be expensive houses. We're gonna build them as cheap as we possibly can, that are still reasonable houses, but nonetheless, it's not easy to sell that for anything, you know, a three-bedroom house under $500,000, right? So, one of the things we've got to look at is, what's the problem we're trying to solve here, right? We've got a Melrose problem, we've got a bunch of land that, or, you know, essentially a project that promised a bunch of affordable housing and is now bankrupt. And you've got a couple developers that are willing to take a swing at it, and we're willing to do that because we live here and we think we can make a little money off of it, but this isn't one of those buy a private jet projects, you know? So, specifically to your comment about increasing the amount of affordable, you start pushing the edges of what is actually feasible at that point in time. You know, with the cottages piece, you've got a large Melrose obligation, it's got no infrastructure in it either, so you're probably looking at about $2 million worth of roads and sewers for 87 houses. Right out of the chute, before you can even start building, you can see we've got some pretty substantial costs. So, we're trying to thread the needle there between how can we actually get some reasonable houses for local folks and solve all the problems that we got out there? That was a bit of a general answer, too, sorry. While I'm standing here, any other questions?
Thank you. Let's go back to staff, and what I'd like to do is pick up where I left off and turn now to the, a couple questions I have on the gas station and the commercial development. I understand in 2004, it was an eight-pump gas station, Yumi?
That's correct.
And it's an eight-pump gas station today?
That's correct.
And the commercial development was previously projected at 40,000 square feet, and now it's been reduced to 17,000 square feet?
For the Village Center.
For the Village Center. Is that near the gas station?
That's...
And then the square footage for the gas station and convenience stores going up from 1,800 square feet to 2,800 square feet?
That's correct.
So, overall, in terms of the, the combined commercial development, we're looking at a reduction, almost cutting square footage in half?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, is that projected? Could you give me an indication of whether that means there'd be less traffic and parking in connection with the commercial center?
Yes, I would think that that would be, that would correlate.
Okay. Where does, where's the community center go?
So it was identified to be allowed within the Village Center.
Okay. Okay, and why is that square footage being proposed for a reduction? Or actually, it goes to zero?
Yes, so this is also based off of the current Village proposal, the exact square footages of the Village Center. I would say that the community center was an allowed use, it wasn't a required use within the Village Center.
And you know why? This was something the developer was proposing?
Yes.
And then on the clubhouse, I'm trying, can't remember now exactly who brought up, who spoke about the impact of reducing the clubhouse? Can you address why the clubhouse is being reduced in size, or would be reduced in size?
The proposed number is exactly what has been built out there, so that's what's been contemplated as part of the Village, as part of the Grace Crossing specific plan.
Oh, it's already been built?
Yes.
We're talking about the pro shop and?
Yes.
And the church has already been built, correct?
The church next to the cottage site has been built, the church within the Village Center has not been built. It's similar to the community center, it's allowed but not required.
On page 10 of the staff report, parcel D and F are described as being currently zoned for multifamily residential, but also as being inconsistent with the specific plan. Can you explain in what way they're inconsistent?
I would say that since the RM zone and the RS zone and CN zone are all generally within our development code requirements, they're a zone that's allowed, that is within our town outside of the Grace Crossing specific plan. The requirements for those zones do not align exactly with the allowed uses within the Grace Crossing specific plan. So really, what should have been done is either a new zone should have been created for the Grace Crossing specific plan for these particular areas, so that it's a very specific Grace Crossing, neighborhood commercial zone, maybe, that would then reference the Grace Crossing specific plan, rather than reference potentially to future developers to the development code, which would be confusing.
Okay. Did staff ever notice or host any meetings with the Grace Crossing community on this proposal?
Not the specific proposal, no.
Can you describe to me, what are some of the alternatives the commission could do in terms of approving only part of what's being recommended? Is there a way of approving things that are more necessary for affordable housing while continuing other matters? Can you describe the complications on that to me?
I would say that the complication is the noticing requirement. We did notice that these specific items would be looked at, including the addendum, which then if we wanted to change the Grace Crossing, modify the specific plan amendments, then we would need to then amend the addendum. So whatever action you take to modify the specific plan, we would then have to modify the addendum.
But certainly, the commission has the discretion to approve only a portion of what has been proposed. I mean, if there are aspects of the proposed amended specific plan that you like and others that you find you cannot recommend, you can certainly recommend approval of only those that you can find it within you to approve or recommend approval of.
The other option that we have, too, is also for staff to facilitate a dialogue with the community members, not just the ones here tonight, but others, and we can make ourselves available to do that between now and when the council meeting would be, should the commission forward their recommendation tonight.
Okay. My concern is having a gap between expiration of the development agreement and the adoption of staff recommendations, and which recommendations are more essential to being adopted upon expiration of the development agreement. Is there any way of identifying those? Or is that a can of worms?
I'm not sure that we can give you a quick answer to that at this point.
In terms of our being able to adopt some of the recommendations and not others, do we have a list that helps us segregate out the various items?
I think that Yumi could probably walk through the various components of the recommended action, then you can decide what to do. I mean, bear in mind that the commission's action, if there is to be an action tonight, is only to make a recommendation to the council. The council won't be bound by that recommendation, whatever it may be. So you could recommend denial of the whole thing, or approval of the whole thing, or a mix of the two, and the council then would make its own decision. So I think that as always, you should vote your conscience and do what you think is right.
Okay. Let me ask, would it be possible to notice a community meeting between now and the council meeting?
I'll answer that. I mean, yes, we can. It's gonna be a tight timeline for us, because we have lots of things working on, but clearly there's community interest here, so we can commit to doing a meeting. It would be easiest for us if we could facilitate that in this room, but we can look at that. The noticing shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Who wants to start, now that I've used up all the time, my time?
I have a list, but I also have a few disclosures. The first disclosure I wanted to make is that I briefly spoke with a Grace homeowner last week casually about the multifamily housing and the existing parking issue. I spoke with Alexis Aller of Mountain Area Preservation as well. We discussed the plan changes and MAPS issues. And then I also should disclose that I work as an independent consultant, and I do design a review for Grace Crossing for the single-family homes, and I am paid by the Grace Crossing Master Association. So I wanted to put that out there, so that's all on the record. And then I will jump into my questions. What was the public noticing for this? It appears that people were notified on Wednesday, February 13th?
An email was sent to the HOA on February 1st with a project routing request. I'm not 100% sure if that was emailed out. We did notice in the Sierra Sun on February 8th per our development code requirements, and then we sent out another note to the HOA when the staff report was published, so that they could email it out to them.
Is that?
And then we also posted at their fitness center.
So emailing to the HOA, is that kind of standard procedure for notifying?
I would say that that's an additional thing that we do.
Okay. And then, let's see, I'm, to be perfectly honest, I think I'm confused. I read the staff report, and I really thought that Table 1 was what was being proposed or had been proposed, and then there were some changes. So I was looking at that as to what we would be considering tonight as part of this, you know, accepting a revised development agreement. But what I think I'm hearing, and I'd love for you to clarify this, is no, that's not the case, that's all off the table. What we're considering is the increased density, and then we're really just looking at existing inclusionary housing and workforce housing policies that would be applied?
I would say that that's the gist. Table 2 shows the actual changes in density.
And, okay, and what page is Table 2?
Page 7 of the staff.
So that just reflects density, that doesn't reflect any affordability, any locals' housing, any nothing?
That's correct.
Okay, so basically, I guess my overarching question is, why bother with any of this? Because it's no different than what we would be applying if someone were to come forward with any project. So what's special about this versus just letting it expire and having someone come forward?
I have a part of an answer that also addresses part of Chair Zabriski's question before. Part of the concern with letting the DA simply expire is that there's some ambiguity in how affordable housing is treated in the unbuilt parts of the specific plan. So PC2 Policy 8 does indeed say that the number of affordable units shall be equal to 20% of the number of market-rate units, but in another part of the specific plan under Housing Program 1.2.1, there's a comment that the general plan land use policy that applies to PC2, which is the specific plan allows for a maximum of 100 affordable units. So that appears to be a bit of an internal inconsistency, and I'm not sure that we can give you a definitive answer as to how many affordable units could be required on any of the unbuilt parcels if the DA were to expire and we were to be left with only the specific plan. So I think that the best we can tell you is that there is a chance that we could not require any more affordable units on any of those unbuilt parcels unless the specific plan is amended.
And why is that? I know there was a comment in the staff report that the 92 units would have basically achieved their inclusionary housing requirement, but that when you minus the 28, and then you take into account kind of the overall density, including the commercial, isn't that quite a bit more than 64?
Well, I mean, we might be able to require a few, because I don't have the numbers in front of me, but this reference to a general plan land use policy that apparently caps the number in the entire specific plan at 100 would suggest that we're not going to get anything close to what's existing now plus 15% in the unbuilt portions.
And that's the 1994 general plan? Is that what you're referring to with the land use chart or the?
Yeah, the specific plan dates from 2004, so I think it would be the 1994 general plan.
Yeah, well, that was the guiding document. And so is that where that policy is? I must not have seen that with the 100, that there was a 100 unit?
Unfortunately, the specific plan reference to the general plan land use policy doesn't include a specific pinpoint citation, so I can't tell you where in that general plan it is, but we will try to find that for you momentarily.
And, but that's what you're saying, is that the general plan, the 1994 general plan said had a 100-unit cap?
Possibly. So we have to figure that out to see whether that still applies, and actually, now that I think about it, whether a simple specific plan amendment would be enough. So keep talking, keep asking questions, and let me see what I can dig up.
So basically, the specific plan that was approved was at odds with that general plan? Or it supersedes it, does it not? I mean, doesn't the specific plan take precedent over?
No, in the hierarchy of kind of town land use documents, the general plan is at the top, it's essentially the constitution. So the specific plan is not inconsistent, as long as you weren't trying to have your 20% of units equate to more than 100 overall.
But because there was this development agreement that had many more, that had many more units, though, right? At the end of the day?
There could have been some inconsistency in the documents, much as we somehow allowed in the DA more units than the EIR covered. I don't know, 2004 was a weird time, but we're trying to figure this out.
Well, and, I mean, at that time, too, as you remember, we were going through the 2025 general plan update, so we were right in the middle of discussions about affordable housing, because we didn't have much in our '96 general plan.
Right.
And so there were other discussions that happened at the council level that went into some direction about how to finish out these specific plans while we were in that process. So remembering back that far, that's kind of where we ended up, was trying to bridge the gap between what we wanted to see in the 2025 general plan, what we didn't have in the '96 general plan, and what we wanted with the development agreement.
Okay, well, so eventually, we'll get a question to that. Is it possible to put an extension on this soon-to-expire development agreement, apply, let's say, a year, and then that would allow for a more robust community process, i.e. the general plan update process that we're engaging in, and would really give us the opportunity to talk about these issues, give ample public notice, let the community members come in, let the community come in, assess the Mountain Housing Council work, and really get a better sense of kind of what we need, and then also, you know, what benefits might come from that?
I think that as a practical matter, trying to extend the development agreement's going to be virtually impossible, because of the uncertainty about, concerning the ownership of several of the parcels. You can't amend the DA without the consent of all the owners of the properties that would be bound by the DA, and the ownership of some of the parcels perhaps cannot be ascertained at this point. So I think that a better approach, if your inclination is to delay things to allow for more community discussion, maybe more environmental review, would be for the council to adopt a moratorium covering some or all of the remaining specific plan area. That, I think, is much cleaner than trying to resurrect this kind of nearly-dead DA.
Okay, thank you. Oh, is the Village up for discussion tonight, or is it off the table? It's a separate issue, it's got a complete application, and we really shouldn't even be talking about it.
We can't discuss the application, per se. You can only discuss what's on the agenda, which is the potential amendment of the specific plan.
Okay. And then just to clarify, I don't think that the specific plan stated an eight-pump gas station, I think it was just a square footage, is that correct?
The specific plan says 1,800 square feet, that's correct. The mitigation measures in the EIR require that the gas station be eight pumps.
Okay, I hadn't, what?
Or less.
Okay, yeah, that wasn't clear to me. And why has the cottage site been downsized by two parcels? Is that a developer-driven?
Developer-driven, and using that additional residential units towards attached residential.
Okay. And then can we try to touch on how the Melrose tie into all of this? Is that something we can?
Yeah, let me take a stab at it, because this is extraordinarily complicated. As has been mentioned, there is a Melrose that was formed by the PUD. It was not a town Melrose district, it was PUD to pay for utility infrastructure. The unbuilt parcels, not all, not the Village parcel, but DF and the cottage site have been in default for a very, very long time, because the owners stopped paying because they didn't think there was any point, because they weren't developing. So at this point, the CFD is not yet insolvent, but it is having to dip into its reserves in order to make payments on its bond debt. The PUD and the town and some potential buyers of some of those parcels have been in discussions about how to address that. So the Paradigm 8 team has been talking about buying parcels D and F. I think they've talked to the PUD, Mr. Sazinkowski and his partner have talked to the town and the PUD about buying the cottage site, although the ownership of that site is a little bit up in the air. But we, the town and the PUD and Paradigm 8 and Mr. Sazinkowski have been trying to work together to find a way for those properties to get out of Melrose default, ascertain their ownership status, get them into the hands of some people who might develop, which would then start payments flowing from those parcels and help restore the solvency of the CFD. So when the comment has been made that, you know, we're sort of dealing with people who may not own the property, it's absolutely true. I mean, there's no denying it. But the people that we've been dealing with have been the only people in the last, I don't know how many years, who've expressed any interest in buying any of the three parcels that are in arrears on the CFD. So they do seem, at this point, to represent the best path forward in terms of getting the CFD solvent again and getting something built on those parcels. So although we're not, they don't have any official property interests, and the town and the PUD don't owe them anything in particular, that does seem to be a path forward.
I have one last question. Why are we applying, we have these, I think, minimum densities on some of the properties, but then the cottage site has a maximum, a minimum and a maximum density? Can you explain that?
I kind of went back and forth on this. The cottage site, I think we could discuss whether or not it should be a minimum and a maximum density if you're interested in looking at fewer units as an appropriate use of that site. I think the maximum is because that's what the specific plan is contemplating. So I think that's why we put the maximum in for any of those parcels that have maximums. For minimum, I think we just wanted to ensure that we wouldn't, that the developer or future developer would put in like three units, which would then be unaffordable.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now.
You want to go, Suzy?
Yeah, I still have more, is that okay?
Oh, sure.
Okay. I do want to sort of quickly address the...
I do want to sort of quickly address the parking thing. The parking issue has been heard, and I'm not in any way ignoring it. So I want to quickly bring up that in part of the PC, let's see, PC policy, I think it's circulation policy 5.2. Originally, they were proposing trolley stops are proposed to serve the Village Center District, Coachlind Schools, and lodging. Residences are always harder because even if there is public transportation, it's hard. We need cars here in town. But I could see that being a help. I don't know if there's any way to resurrect this old circulation policy, or it's still part of the specific plan. So I don't know if that would help, but I would be in favor of resurrecting some sort of trolley stops for that location to try and decrease some of the traffic and hopefully some of the parking issues. So moving on from that, I have so many issues. One thing I did want to talk about, so we have the Village Dale Creighton? Hi. So I'm sure that you know, in Truckee, we've recently had quite a kerfuffle about retail space and specifically grocery stores. From what I hear, the current proposal does not have, it has a mini mart, but not an actual full-fledged grocery store. In order to avoid what we've just gone through in the past, is there any way to put in the specific plan some sort of caveat that if someone's, if this falls through or something and the next one comes up, the grocery store would trigger some sort of study or something? Or is there any way to put that in the specific plan?
Well, there are a lot of things we could put in the specific plan. I mean, just be a little bit careful with your discussion at the moment about not addressing their particular pending application, because that's, of course, not on the agenda. But within the realm of what could be put into a specific plan amendment, I mean, you could do some kind of phasing requirements such that if certain types of development were proposed, you'd have to do some additional study. Could do that. There are some things you can do. And I have a half an answer for Commissioner Riley and Commissioners Zabriskie and anybody else who cares. The reference in the specific plan to the general plan limit of 100 affordable units is a bit of a conundrum because that provision was not carried over into what is the current general plan. So I will, at the risk of being too direct, I will tell you that I'm not sure that we know what the implication is. It's in the specific plan, but is it simply a reference to a now-gone general plan policy such that it has no effect in the specific plan? Or does it have a substantive meaning because it's still in the specific plan? I'm not sure I know the answer, but I think that if we, if the commission and council were to amend the specific plan, we could address that unknown. And if the specific plan is not amended, we may get to all have an exciting time finding out together in court.
And I have to say that the original thing that I brought up, the 20% was also in reference to something in the general plan that is no longer. So both of those are in the same boat, correct?
Well, the 20% is in the specific plan without a cross-reference to the general plan. So that 20% proportion, I think, survives in the specific plan. But as I said, it's just the effect of that cross-reference to the general plan with its 100 unit cap that I don't know the effect of at this point.
Okay, thank you. And then this is a general concern again as well. There's a lot of talk about the Mountain Housing Council and how much we appreciate their efforts and how everyone is trying to work with them, which is awesome. I would like to mention that the Mountain Housing Council is also in favor of incorporating our affordable housing in with our market rate housing. And generally, when I've spoken with Shawna about it, they are not in favor of sequestering one away from the other. So that's just a note for future reference. This definitely seems to be separating the two uses, which, you know, I guess having it separate is better than not having it at all. And then I wanted to ask, you suggested, Andy, a moratorium on development. And how would that affect the current three parties here who are interested?
Well, I imagine they'd be more than a bit dismayed, put out, annoyed, aggravated. I don't think they'd be happy, and I don't know that a moratorium is something that we are suggesting. But given that the DA is going to expire in a month and that we don't know at this point exactly how many affordable units could be required in the remaining unbuilt portions of the specific plan, a moratorium could buy time, if the council were so inclined. And remember, it takes a four-fifths vote of the council to adopt a moratorium. And it wouldn't have to cover the entire specific plan area. It could cover only portions of it, so they could carve out the village if they think that's appropriate. But that would be one way of ensuring that nothing gets built without affordable housing if there's not a will to amend the specific plan to clarify that we can require affordable housing.
I'm sorry, you just said a four-fifths vote of council, not of commission?
Yeah, the commission is, does not have within its purview the ability to adopt a moratorium, nor is the commission actually required to make a recommendation to the council concerning a moratorium. So if, just regards to timing, because the development agreement is going to expire on March 19th, which would be before the next commission meeting, if the commission cannot find a way to make a recommendation to the council tonight, I think we'd have to have some discussion internally, but it might be that we recommend to the council to adopt a moratorium at their very next meeting, which is the first meeting in March, as a way of preventing development from occurring out there without any affordable housing requirements until things can be sorted out.
Thank you.
David, your cleanup.
Thank you all for the excellent questions so far. You've answered a lot of them, a lot of my questions anyways. Couple other items here to address some of the community concerns. Go with some. So on parcel B, the cottages, is there any way to have a secondary egress on that?
I mean, I think my understanding is that the land adjacent to it is open space that's maintained by the homeowners association. So I'm not sure that there's sufficient ability to have it loop back onto China Camp Road the way that it's been created as a parcel as of right now. Some of the other complexity of that is that the layout for the roads and the utilities were planned as part of that. So there would be additional work that would have to be done to revisit that. So I mean, from our sense and what we understand about the property is that it would be very challenging to find a secondary access.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then in regards to the density on parcel D, what is the current density of the Henness Flats apartments per acre now?
It's approximately 13 units per acre.
And then what are we proposing for parcel D?
It'll be 18 units per acre.
Okay, and, you know, what, I mean, what do we think that looks like? I mean, you know, in order to, I think it's obvious that the parking situation doesn't work with what is currently there. So in order to do that, I mean, would we be talking about having to go with like three-story structures with, or subterranean parking, or, you know, I mean, has any vision been given to how you would make that, how we would make that work from engineering standpoint?
I would say that, excuse me, I would say that, yes, likely you would have to go to three stories, which is allowed within the specific plan height limitations. And I would say that there are provisions within the specific plan to allow for flexibility in either the height limit, if necessary, parking, if you find that that's appropriate, which it doesn't sound like you, reducing the parking, doesn't sound like it's a direction you would likely go, or just reducing the density even from 120 down to a different number.
I mean, there are other alternatives that have been discussed, just more big picture within the community about housing projects, because parking tends to be one of the more expensive requirements of building affordable housing, that you have the option to create units where there's no parking, but you provide the public transit specific for that. We have other developers who are looking at doing car share as part of their project design, where they provide the cars and make that a requirement of the tenants. So there are other options out there, but those would be at the project-specific level where we would discuss those.
And then also, just to address another community comment, so the town of Truckee basically, from what I understand, doesn't have anything in place to police the parking outside of the winter road plowing ban, is that correct?
I'll jump into this one. So we are aware of the parking issue. We have a code compliance officer who has been in contact with the property management company for the Henness Apartments, and the challenge is that you can publicly park within the roadways during non-snow seasons. And so although we, you know, understand that a lot of those cars are associated with the Henness Apartments, we can't totally segregate that right now. So there has been ongoing discussion with the property management company about providing better parking management within their site for them to have a better understanding of whose cars they are, how many of them are specifically their tenants versus guests versus everything else. So that's been an ongoing discussion that we have. But as of right now, we cannot remove those vehicles from the right-of-way when it's outside of snow season. So that was the comment that was made about the finger pointing, that there are many aspects of the town that are working on this specific topic, from the police department to our code compliance department, the planning department. So we're all working on it. I will say that the property management company and ultimately the property owner is looking for solutions that are going to have a better impact than just the town constantly talking to the property management company.
Can I take on to that for a second? Would there be a way to require like parking permits for that area for the new development or for the existing Henness?
So the challenge with that is that it's not part of our parking district. Our parking district is how we regulate parking permits, and that's outside of the scope of what the town would use a parking permit system for. So it's more effective, from our perspective, to work with the property management company to try and make sure that their tenants understand that there's a maximum number of vehicles, you know, that come with a lease, there's guest parking that has to be provided, and for them to take on that ownership of what's happening with their tenants and the use of those spaces versus us trying to come up with a proposal to council to consider an expansion of the parking district to something like a permit system out there.
Would they instigate a parking system? I mean, is that somehow, is a way that they could deal with that?
Well, when you start talking about town rights of way and regulation of parking, that's where I say that's a municipal code issue. So that's where we get into kind of parking district, police management of parking. But as far as the management that the company has for their actual tenants, that's something. I mean, they could issue their own permits for use within the complex so that they know which vehicle is tied to which permit and to be able to track it. And so we've had those discussions with them, and we have similar discussions with other properties in the community, too, where there oftentimes just end up being more cars than they anticipated coming to the site, whether it's guest or tenant, and it just becomes an act of management for them. So some of it's just getting a grasp on that and working through solutions.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay, and then the last question I have, again, kind of addressing a community comment. So if I understand correctly, parcels F and D and B are all owned by separate entities with individual developers looking at potentially buying them. The village does have an application in. One of the comments that was made was the reduction in community center and how that was a detriment. We, the town, doesn't have any kind of, there's no gun that we're holding to anybody's head that says you have to build a community center. That would be the onus of an individual developer if they wanted to use their land for that. Is that correct?
That's correct. The specific plan isn't specific in that nature. It doesn't say that it's a requirement to build this community center. It gives you specific square footages that you can build to. It's not, we can argue that it maybe could be considered a build-to number, but that hasn't been our interpretation, and that hasn't been council's direction thus far. So it's not a build-to number. It's just a number that you can build within.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to deliberation now. All started off, and then we'll, Dave, I think we'll go to you and then work back across over to Susie. I'm very curious to hear what the other commissioners think. What I'm going to do now is explain why I'm inclined to adopt the staff's recommendation. I want to begin, though, by saying how much I do appreciate the community turnout tonight. I think my principal regret is that there wasn't a notice of a community meeting. I'm going to leave it up to staff to see if they want to, I mean, this is the way I feel now, leave it up to staff to decide if they think it'd be appropriate to notice a community meeting between now and the town council meeting in the event the commission adopts the staff's recommendation. All of that said, we've had at least a dozen comments. I suspect we have traversed the spectrum of the criticisms of the project, that what a meeting with community members would reveal is the same complaints. There would probably be some people supporting the project, but I expect those who oppose it would be saying the same thing. And so I want to run through those as I understand them, so you understand my inclinations. First of all, I want to, I remain persuaded that the two big issues are the increase in housing from 725 units to 765, and then a reduction in the commercial space, where it would be reduced down to 43% of what it was in 2004. Within the increase in residential units, the main criticism appears to be the increase in multifamily housing. And what I see, looking at the staff report's recommendation, is this multifamily housing is going in a far corner of Gray's Crossing next to the freeway. It's hard for me to imagine a multifamily development in Gray's Crossing that would have less impact on the single-family residential owners. I heard a comment from the audience that this housing goes in right at the entrance, the gateway entrance, and it's my understanding first that Prosser Dam Road is the main entrance to Gray's Crossing. I guess Gateway is the second entrance, and there's already the Henness Flats apartment at the entrance. That leads to what appears to be the more critical concern of the people I've heard speak tonight, and that is the parking and the traffic around Henness Flats. That is something that would be addressed in terms of the new project in connection with a proposal for the project itself, a determination of how much parking would be allowed and where it would go. That's not before the commission tonight. In terms of the Henness Flat development, that is something for the town police and which other unit of the town is appropriate to address Henness Flats. If there's a problem with Henness Flats parking, that is something that's apart from what we're looking at here tonight. There was a complaint about the commercial development. I heard at least one commenter say that they had no idea that this, there was going to be a commercial development there. What I'm seeing, though, from this record is the commercial development has been in the record since 2004. There's the streets that are out there. It's hard not to drive through that area and not realize there must have been something planned over there by Annie's Way or whatever Annie's Place is. I forget the name. Anyway, what I see is actually a reduction in the impact of commercial development because it's been reduced to less than half. The clubhouse is already there. That explains why it's being reduced. And then the last thing is the community center. And I listened to Dave on that, and I simply agree with the points he made. So that pretty much covers why I'm inclined to accept the staff's recommendation and let the town council deal with these problems. I think we could deliver it to them well enough that they could handle it. Again, I want to thank everyone who did come out and speak. That's important to us up here at the DIAS.
I can't, I can't get behind the density on parcel D. I don't see it. I see that the parking challenges with what we already have with Henness Flats is a failure. And to try and increase the density next door without any real clear path on how that's going to work and how that parking's going to work and how these existing problems are going to get resolved and not made worse, I don't see it. So let's continue the deliberations. I'd just like to hear what anybody, everyone else has to say, and we can figure out how to go forward, but that's my two cents right now.
I wish I had a more clear direction on this. I'm not happy with really much of what we've been presented with. I think specifically the thing that upsets me the most is this feeling of being up against a wall in terms of having to make a pretty big decision because we're faced with this timeline of an expiring development agreement in a month when it seems like we've, there's been a lot of time that we could have had this conversation and it could have been really vetted with the, with the community members who are concerned, the property owners, the community as a whole, the Mountain Housing Council, the general plan update process. So I'm struggling with that. I have a really hard time supporting what's being proposed when we have a process in place that's happening right now, and I would love to see this integrated into that. I do have one more question for town staff. This may be redundant, I apologize, but it would help me move forward. If we don't approve the rezone, like your specific application of the specific plan zoning for these three parcels, would it no longer be part of the Gray's Crossing specific plan or it stays as part of, it's still under the umbrella, it will always be under the umbrella of the, of the Gray's Crossing specific plan? Did that make sense?
So if we don't pursue the rezoning, is it still, I think, yes, it would still stay under the specific plan?
There's no way to take these properties out of the specific plan?
Not without amending the specific plan, no.
And could we amend the specific plan?
Sure.
And is that something we could say or make a proposal to the town council that in light of everything that we've received, it makes the most sense to pursue a specific plan amendment? I mean, I'm really concerned about this 100-unit thing and the old general plan, and now we're going on to our third general plan. And I just, I want us to be all on the same page.
It's my view that the agenda item for tonight does not encompass that particular amendment. Could it be done in the abstract? Yes, certainly you could recommend severing portions of the current specific plan land from the specific plan. You just can't do it tonight.
Okay. So if we can't do it tonight, would the action be we would, we would recommend a moratorium to the town council because we want to pursue a specific plan amendment?
You can recommend anything you like. It's just a moratorium does not require anything from the planning commission. It doesn't come before you. It doesn't require a recommendation. But if you, if the commission finds that you cannot make a recommendation as to the amendment of the specific plan, and all you can agree on is a recommendation of a moratorium, certainly you can make that recommendation.
But we could, so what I'm hearing is we could, even though it's not part of staff's recommendations, we as a commission could make a recommendation to council tonight to make a, that we would prefer to make a specific plan amendment as opposed to what we're being presented with.
You could communicate that to them, but they would not be able to act upon it at their next meeting. Since it wasn't before you, it can't really be your official recommendation, therefore they can't act on it.
Okay, and then what would happen? They would, they would consider it at a further, at a date, a later date?
Well, if it's going to be an official recommendation from the planning commission, we'd have to agendize it for a future planning commission meeting, and then it would go to the council in due course after that.
So and our challenge obviously is the timing of this. I mean, I think that's why we're here tonight. That's why this seems rushed. And I know that it seems like we waited until the last minute to bring this to you, but we don't actually have the property owners at the table. I mean, that's the challenge is that East West Partners is no more. So had we had a property owner who was still involved, it'd be a very different discussion. We would have been able to work through things very differently. So it's, it is a difficult situation to be in. I think Andy and I and Jenna, all of us have been talking about this for quite a while trying to figure out what's the best way to honor the original specific plan and the expectations of all property owners and the community at large for the development of Gray's Crossing. I think everyone has a common goal to see this be successful in its final build-out if we can get there. And right now, what we have in the specific plan and with the expiring of the development agreement won't get us there. So I mean, that's why we presented this package to the commission for your consideration tonight.
Can we just extend the development agreement without changing it?
No, because as I mentioned before, the ownership of several of the parcels within the DA is uncertain at best. So just identifying the owners of those parcels would take more time than we've got within the DA, let alone getting their approval. The cottage site may be owned by a bank in New York. It may be owned by an LLC in Truckee. I'm heartened, I'm encouraged that Paradigm 8 has an option to purchase the other two, but I don't actually know who they have that option with because I don't know who owns those parcels.
I forgot, I had another question, but now I got so caught up in everything that was going back and forth, I can't remember what that question was. But I guess to go back to the deliberation concerns, you know, to me, this is one of our last local housing projects or what was perceived to be a locals' housing area peripheral to the town core. And I, I feel like the, while it's nice to have some developer interest and that's better than nothing, it seems to pale in comparison to what the development agreement had proposed. And I'm really struggling with that in terms of these locals' housing units. And so that's something I'm definitely caught up in. I'm also caught up in the inconsistencies between the documents, EIR from '94 and then the specific plan that's 15 years old. We have a general plan coming up. So I'm not inclined to support what's being proposed tonight, and it's more out of a concern that I'm just not certain about what, what we're being asked to do and that I could stand behind that.
Okay, I'm just going to start with some of your points. I agree that the commercial plan has been there for, for a long time. I personally did not know about it either. I think a lot of the town unfortunately doesn't know about these longstanding plans. I don't know how to get that word out there better, but I do think it would be a good thing to get more public involvement in those. But it has been longstanding. So I don't, I don't see as we could, you know, that's not our place to change that tonight. I do also agree that the parking is not necessarily for the commission to decide tonight. That is more project-specific. There are regulations in Truckee regarding how many parking spaces are required per unit. So then I'm not, me personally, I'm not married to the extra 100 and, well, the extra 53 units at the multifamily. But I am totally heartened by him saying the developer, Paradigm 8 folks, I think, saying that they would be willing to do the whole thing as affordable or at least the locals'. Those are good things for our town. I do understand the concern. I do have to say that one person said, well, let's put the high-density next to your house. And I live in Sierra Meadows and I am down the street from some of the higher-density stuff that it's gone in. And all I can say is that my son has lots of friends in there, and it is not a detriment to my community. I do feel it's an addition. So as far as, I, I understand the need to move forward. I understand that the business interests that are involved right now can't hang on for forever. I would like to give them some assurance and some understanding that, that we want their development. I understand the Melrose issue and that defaulting on these things is detrimental to our community as well. So I am conflicted. I like the, I like that our current specific plan has 20% of affordable. And I am hesitant to drop that down to our 15%. I do understand that that makes it harder to develop. So I am open to changing things. I don't, I do agree with the fact that parcel D is off to the corner of this. Yes, there are some houses. Yes, it will affect your, your circulation getting in and out. But again, these parcels were slated for a certain amount of development from when the whole thing began. So that is a longstanding issue that I don't think we can solve tonight. So I'm conflicted and not sure where to go. I think that we should, I think that we should amend this specific plan. I think that we should allow our developers to help us not default. And I just, I wish that we could address a couple of those issues before we did.
We can make this a dialogue, and what I would like to do is go back to David's comments on the parking because my understanding is it would be difficult, if not impossible, to decide what parking would be required in connection with this recommendation that's before us now, that the issue of parking would have to be resolved in the context of a specific project that provides for a certain number of units. I realize we're looking, it was a nice comparison to find out that Henness Flats is 13 units per acre and the new development would be 18 acres per, excuse me, 18 units per acre. But that's a maximum number. That doesn't mean anything because with that kind of density, the number of units is probably going to be much less, both because of the parking and the snow storage. We don't know what it's going to be in the abstract. We need to see an actual project proposed and then address that conflict between parking and housing in the context of an actual project. So I think that's your main concern. I just want you to be aware of why I don't see that as, as something that prevents us from accepting the staff recommendation tonight or prevents everyone in this room or everyone in Gray's Crossing from showing up when a particular project is proposed for parcel D. The other, okay, the other point I wanted to address is the one Nikki raised about the affordable housing, how this affordable housing would be under this proposal versus the earlier specific plan. The planning commission looked at this a few months ago before staff put it over. I think mostly I'm the one who prevented a recommendation from going forward on this, on a, an approval that would protect the affordable housing. The affordable housing that was proposed in the specific plan had different criteria. I mean, it's difficult to call it affordable housing because some of it was either locals' only or it's some other criteria that didn't have anything to do with income. And there was a 30-year deed restriction on some of the housing and not on others. So it's really not something that's comparable. And what we're looking at tonight is something that comports with what we have in the development code is consistent with what we're doing generally in this town. And so for that reason, I'm comfortable with that ratio. Those, those are my two last comments.
So just as you are deliberating, because I can see we're, we're sort of of two minds at the moment, which happens, that one of the things we were looking at is with parcel D, the commission could decide to establish a different sort of minimum density. And if you want to talk about the maximum density, I mean, that's something you could put into your recommendation, knowing that when a project comes before the commission, you ultimately have the say in what's appropriate based on parking design and all the other aspects of project review that you do when you do regular project review.
And just while we're counting noses here, a 2-2 deadlock, which means that you're not actually making any sort of recommendation to the council, means that the council cannot consider this at its next meeting because the state law and the Muni code say that the planning commission must make a recommendation. So if you cannot make a recommendation just yet, then the council can't act on the specific plan amendment in any respect. And the most they could do would be to consider a moratorium. So if you cannot find three votes to recommend approval and you're deadlock 2-2, you could consider having a 3-1 recommendation for denial as, simply as a means of getting it to the council. Or if, if you really are at 2-2, then we'll be proceeding down a different path with the council.
So kind of a, it's not off-topic, but not specific to this. What is the most density we have of any project in town right now?
That's constructed?
Yeah, built, constructed, approved. Constructed.
I would say that the Coburn Crossing, partially constructed in that portion that it is, the residential component is in, it's about 18, 17, 17 residential units per acre, which is only partially constructed.
It also depends on the scale that we're talking about too, because if you took the Worglin House that has 13 units in Brickletown, it's on like a .01 acre site, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to come up with something with analogous, right?
Yeah.
To see where we're at, just in general.
Yeah.
I mean, because obviously that's a huge part of the community pushback on one side of the equation, but then, you know, there's another part of the community that is saying we need this, and we do need it. But to try to rush it through, I mean, I just think we need a little more time to digest all this stuff.
What was MacGyver, when we just approved the MacGyver development up by the hospital?
It's a 16 to 18 dwelling unit per acre.
Andy, can you explain that again? If we have a majority vote one way or the other, it would go up to the town council?
That's correct. It's in both the government code and in the development code that the planning commission must make a recommendation before the council can consider. must make a recommendation before the council can consider a specific plan amendment. Works the same way for the General Plan.
I have a quick question. I believe it says in here that even if the Gray's Crossing specific plan is the controlling document, it can still be amended and addressed by the General Plan. Is that true?
Well, the General Plan can override just about anything, except anything that has vested rights, like a development agreement or a vesting tentative map. So the General Plan could, in some sense, supersede the specific plan, and then what you do after you adopt the General Plan is you have to go back and do some housekeeping to make sure that any specific plans that might have been affected by the General Plan, or any zoning requirements, or anything else in your municipal code, are then amended to conform with the new General Plan.
So can I ask you a question, John?
Oh, yeah.
So I wasn't aware of the Planning Commission hearing and how you guys made this recommendation. I wish I had been there. So your Planning Commission felt that it was better to just apply inclusionary housing than have locally restricted majority and some income restricted?
It was a big, it was a big part of the discussion. The actual thing that was, the only thing that was on the table was an amendment to the specific plan that would recommend that the Development Code would govern all aspects of the development that weren't covered by the development agreement. But in the process of that, we scrutinized what the affordable housing was, because a lot of our concern was directed at assuring we would have affordable housing, which is one of the same major concerns facing us tonight. And then after that, it went to town council with a much more complicated staff report, asking for guidance on what seemed like a plethora of issues that gave me a headache. And they made their, gave their direction to staff, and now it's back in front of us.
Because what I've been seeing over the years is there's a big push to get rid of the kind of deed-restricted rentals, and now we're looking at these local, deed-restricted to locals but no income cap is kind of the new approach. Did you want to say something?
Well, just that the, that's one of the equivalent proposals that people are proposing in conjunction with our inclusionary housing ordinance. So you can fill that inclusionary housing ordinance, or you can propose an equivalent proposal.
And my, the point I'm trying to make is that the way most developers are coming to the table now is not to do the financially deed-restricted units, but take Coburn Crossing, 138 units that are locally deed-restricted with no income limits unless they can't rent them out, and then they will be forced supposedly to bring their rental prices down so that the locals can afford to rent them. And that's what I see as kind of the new approach, as well as, you know, I think what some of, one of the developers had mentioned, but, you know, the cottages would likely be market rate or some, you know, market rate, but ideally designed to be somewhat lower than super-high-end. So I guess, I guess I'm just concerned about kind of where things have been going with the town, and a desire to see the spectrum more diverse. And that's where I, all my comments tonight were on reflecting Table 1, and, you know, oh, you know, instead of having 30 years, we'd have in perpetuity, and we would have, instead of the income restricted, or we would have that window open to like 195%, which is like Mountain Housing Council, the achievable housing, similar to what the MARTIS Fund is doing for down payment assistance. So that's what I was looking at. I hadn't really been considering this in regards to the inclusionary housing and workforce housing policies, which I don't really see being implemented really anymore as it is. So that's what gives me heartburn, is status quo and what we would get at the end of the day, as well as the fact that we are in the midst of this General Plan update process. And now would, is the best time in my mind to be having these conversations, and not feel forced to agree to something that is unsettling and not well-defined, and not even, I mean, not even scratching the surface about parking. And I think about the Village, and it's going to generate a tremendous amount of parking needs. I would imagine people are going to go there and want to ride their bike around, and who knows what, and what additional parking needs might be needed. So I, again, I have reservations about moving forward tonight with the staff recommendation.
So Commissioner Riley, if I may, you know, your point about the alternative equivalent proposal is something that staff's been looking at, so it's your point about Coburn Crossing, and that's something that council will probably talk about in the near future. It's something that the staff's been working on, trying to bring to council for their policy direction. But ultimately, if they do that, these projects come back to the commission for you to decide, consistency with the inclusionary housing policy. The question we have for you tonight is specific to the fact that the development agreement for Gray's Crossing is going to expire. So this is not a situation that we ultimately wanted to see happen, but it is the reality that we're faced with. And so the council will have to make a decision about what to do with these remaining Gray's Crossings properties, given the fact that we won't have a development agreement. And so if affordability is something that is of concern, you need to take that into consideration as part of your deliberation, obviously, and decide how you want to make that recommendation to council.
Can I make one quick point? We're talking about this thing expiring in a month. We do actually have a Planning Commission meeting exactly a month from now, do we not?
I'm not sure of the date of the next Planning Commission meeting, but you recall, though, that even if the commission were to consider a recommendation on the specific plan amendment, it would then have to be acted upon by the council, which would assuredly not occur before the development agreement would expire.
The next commission meeting is March 19th, and the tentative date for the council action on this item is March 12th.
Could we request a special hearing before that, before the council's hearing, March hearing?
We could. The availability of dates right now is pretty limited, based on what we went through just to schedule the earlier evening's discussion, and the lack of complete participation from everybody. It's been really tough. Also, what we're juggling are other dates that are already captured with General Plan Update and GPAC meetings, which include a number of council and commission members. So we're struggling finding dates right now. It may be possible.
Could we change a General Plan Update meeting to capture this instead of that, as this is, in my mind, more pressing and relevant?
That's a workshop that we've scheduled, and we've already done the notification for that. It's been out for a week and a half now. So it would be very difficult for us to take that back, considering we already booked the community center downtown and already noticed it.
I mean, we can certainly look at dates and contact everybody immediately, but we don't know how feasible that is.
I mean, I would say that we could have capacity to do a neighborhood-level meeting. It would be much more difficult for us to schedule a Planning Commission meeting, given everything that we already have going on. And it will be difficult for us to do a neighborhood meeting, but that's something that, you know, even if it's just me doing that, I can facilitate. I will volunteer myself for that.
Right. My inclination is to accept staff's recommendation, which is to make a recommendation to the council to accept the proposed resolution, and for staff to notice a community meeting so they can get more input from Gray's Crossing before the town council considers the matter. Does anyone have any feelings on that right now?
Well, can I say, it sounds like, if I'm hearing correctly, we have two strong no's, a strong yes, and then me. And in order to move it forward, to get anything done, if I joined the no's, that would be the way to move it forward.
That would allow the town council to consider this at its meeting on the 12th.
Do I hear a motion?
I mean, I think as part of that, our recommendation would be that you kind of include some of the reasoning behind that, so that the town council has a better understanding of what the commission's concerns are. So it's sort of at the discussion level where you include that, so they can hear it more explicitly.
Most definitely. I mean, I think the staff report that we present to the council, if the council is able to hear it on the 12th, we will endeavor to capture the commission's thoughts in both directions. I mean, thoughts in favor and thoughts of concern and opposition. But the more you can tell us about what those are, and you've done a beautiful job of doing that so far, but the more you can tell us, the more we'll have to present to the council so they have a better idea of what you're thinking.
Do you understand my thinking?
I believe I do, yes.
Thank you.
So I think you understand my thinking. I would love to try and stick with a higher percentage of affordable. I would love to address a little bit more of this community planning. I've heard concern about the hotel. We have numerous other hotels in and going in, and are, when do we get to a point where we need to assess the feasibility of these things? And are more hotels, I guess, I don't know, that one's already accepted. I don't know. I'm sorry, I just found out tonight that the Village thing is already in application, and I, so I, so I've heard concern about the hotels. That's a concern. I do feel concerned about the feeling of being rushed, because this is expiring. I do think that some of these discussions are general plan-level discussions. I do see the urgency as well with the expiring general plan. Does that make my position clear?
I think that's helpful, yes.
Do I need to clarify? Or, I know I was all over the map, but if you wanted me to capture my key pieces, I could.
By all means.
Okay. I feel like this is a downgrade from the original specific plan intent. I feel like, like I said, these are some of the last local housing parcels, and I want to make the most of that. I feel like we're defaulting to status quo, and like I had said before, I feel like status quo now has been this, whether it's affordable by design, or locals-only with no financial, you know, deed restrictions, I don't know that we're actually tackling the problem as effectively as maybe we had intended with the last general plan go-around. I feel like we're rushed. I feel like there's a lot of community concerns and issues that need to be dealt with, kind of on a bigger 30,000-foot level. I'm concerned about the inconsistencies with this existing specific plan and the 94 general plan, and, as well as the process that's before us now with our upcoming general plan update process. And I think that's it, but I'm, I, yeah, I don't want to feel up against a wall in moving forward.
Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we deny, make a recommendation to deny the application to the town council.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Commissioner Tarnay?
I don't know how to agree with deny.
Well, since the motion is for denial, if you support denial, you would say yes or aye.
Okay, I'm going to say yes, so we can move forward.
Chair Zabriskie?
No.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gove?
Yes.
Motion passes. Three to one.
Thank you for that, and we will do our very best to reflect all of your comments and concerns in the staff report when this comes to the council on the 12th.
And we will work on scheduling a neighborhood discussion about this between now and when it's scheduled for council.
Okay. The next item on the agenda, I believe, is any commission member updates or items, experiences, wonderful events you want to share with us? Starting with you, Dave. It's been a month now.
No.
Nikki?
I attended the housing workshop down at the Community Arts Center, which I enjoyed. It was well-attended. I will make one comment, and I feel like maybe we'd have a more productive and useful, I felt like most of it was wonderful. I really liked the surveying, like the active surveying. But I was concerned that with some of the maps, we were showing properties that we wouldn't develop today. They have open space zoning designation, so I feel like we weren't accurately depicting, I know it was kind of this open dialogue, but I feel like we're not being genuine with the public if we're letting people think, who aren't totally in the know about all the different properties, that certain properties could be developed when, in fact, they probably couldn't. And I left feeling a bit uncomfortable about that, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you. I, too, attended that workshop, and I share Nikki's sentiment about the map. There was something about that that didn't work out. Part of it is just trying to recognize the map, if you're not familiar with the map. But actually, at least for us old people, it takes a little while to kind of match the map with our visual recollection. On the other hand, I was really impressed with the technology at the beginning of the workshop, where people could vote, do the instantaneous voting. That, I mean, talk about an instantaneous vote count compared with our national elections. That thing was fantastic. So you're to be commended for that. And many people who may not even use a smartphone or iPhone kind of got into it, too, and that was fun to see.
I have had many, many meetings since the last one. I don't know how in detail we need to get, but I met with a couple realtors, just about general what's happening. I've been to town council meetings. I've been to Historic Preservation Advisory Committee meetings. I have been to Citizens Climate Lobby meetings. I have been to meetings with the town manager, meeting with Danielle. So I've also met with, I did run into Molly Hagar. I'm a substitute teacher. I ran into her at the school, talked briefly about her project, which she said that is going to come up before the Planning Commission again. Anyone?
I'll talk about that in a moment.
Okay. Then I did meet up with Kevin Sloan, is that right, Sloan? And I can't find him in here, about their project, just to hear what it's all about. I went to, what was this one? Oh, Good Morning Truckee, heard about the ADS-B, and global warming. Do you guys really want to hear all this? And another town council meeting, and another H-PAC. I think that's about it.
Okay, does staff have any concluding remarks? Were you going to touch on something, Jen, or?
Yes, I was going to discuss Item 9.1, if we're ready for that.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so Item 9.1 is upcoming commission meetings and agenda items, so I'll talk just briefly about what we expect to have on the March 19th agenda. We have a temporary use permit request for the Gray's Crossing Homeowners Association. We have the Art House Movie Theater. That's a project proposed in the Rail Yard Master Plan area. And then, as Commissioner Tarnay mentioned, we will be reviewing the West End Coffee Project for, well, Chair Zabriskie, you may recall that we approved that, we, the commission approved that project at last month's hearing in January. The reason it's coming back is, following approval of the project by the commission, the applicant noted that she was not provided a process that's identified in a 1993 document that's on the town's website, it's kind of the Planning Commission or public hearing procedures. She noticed that there was a five-minute sort of rebuttal period that is identified within those procedures that, at the final meeting, she wasn't provided. So she's requested to have that due process provided to her. The way that we recommended she do that is to request that it return back to the commission for a new review, obviously, before a partially new commission. So we will be looking at that again. I would suspect that'll be the first item on that evening's agenda, given that it's, we're treating it kind of as a continued hearing.
Okay. So we'll pick up and allow the five-minute response. So we'll pick up and allow the five-minute response, or do we start all over again?
Yes, what we'll be recommending is that you start all over again, and that we will be adhering to the very explicit procedures that are articulated in that document that was adopted back in 1993.
It's completely de novo, both as to the standard of review and for conducting the hearing. You're just starting as though you're hearing it for the first time.
So we're going to hear this whole thing all over again from the beginning?
Yes.
And go through that whole fight about parking and all that stuff, all over again from the beginning?
Yes.
Would it be possible to put some time limits on, on the presentation? I was in the audience, but I was struck by, it was just a lot, there was a lot of staff presentation, the applicant had a very comprehensive.
Yes.
I mean, it was, it was, it was a long evening.
Right. So what you'll be seeing is that we will strictly adhere to all of the time frames that are referenced in that document. So the applicant will be given 15 minutes and only 15 minutes, and then a five-minute rebuttal period, which is something different than what we've done historically since probably 1993, that we've had generally more informal processes as we go through a public hearing, where we're not capping an applicant's presentation explicitly to 15 minutes.
And we anticipate bringing before you a proposal that perhaps we get rid of that five-minute rebuttal requirement that nobody's thought about in 20 years, so as to avoid this situation in the future.
At a different meeting.
Correct. It would be later.
Yeah, I mean, the commission had already talked about having your own discussion about how you want to do your meeting management, and we had scheduled that sort of for, I think, April, which I think Nikki's gone, so we were going to push it out to May. So it might be a likely time to revisit that, and whether we want to just remove it altogether or do something different.
And you're going to share with us those 1993 requirements beforehand?
We will have them very explicit, because we'll need to follow them.
Yeah, they're online.
They'll be in the staff report.
We found them.
I'm sorry, can you just tell me what that first item was before the Art House?
It's a temporary use permit for the Grace Crossing HOA. It's in relation to events that they would like to have approved within the homeowners' association.
And all those homeowners have been noticed upon that?
We can talk to them about that when we talk to them this next coming weeks, about the other changes.
Thank you very much.
Jen, I don't know if you had on your list, so we did mention the next workshop for the general plan update on March 14th. So it's going to be at the community center. That one's more focused on the sort of visioning for where we're going to go in the future with the general plan, and some exercises about opportunities, issues, and constraints. So it'll be more of a open house style, not so much a presentation style like we've done in the past. And then separately, we're also working on doing another housing workshop that's more geared specifically towards the Latino community. And we're working with the Family Resource Center on that. We don't have an exact date scheduled yet, but the idea is to really have a more facilitated discussion that's easier to understand than sort of what we've done in the past. So that'll be coming up also.
Okay. Anything else from staff or Nikki?
I have a question. Are we engaging Nevada County on our general plan update process, and Placer County as well, specifically with regards to our land use discussions, since we are bigger than just our boundaries?
So we will, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but we have sort of teams that we put together, so that involves all of the related agencies. And we've only had sort of traffic discussions so far, but we'll expand that once we get a little bit further into the process. We've just been working on getting the existing conditions report completed, working to get that in front of G-PAC, and then there'll be other opportunities where we have Fire District and PUD and everyone else kind of involved more specifically, but they're aware of what we're doing.
I just remember the last general plan go-around, there was a lot of limitations on what we could discuss and even rule on, because there was concern that Nevada County hadn't been at the table, and Placer County hadn't been at the table, and we really needed to have them, because these decisions would impact our sphere of influence and potential annexation and things like that, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that was, but we definitely have them on our list.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that's it from staff, that's it from the diocese. This is, this meeting's adjourned.